And start the recording.
Okay, you're ready. You can get.
We ready? All right. Good evening. I'd like to bring this meeting of the the app where am I Admiral County Commission to order for October 25th. The opportunities for the public to access and participate in the hybrid meeting are posted on the Admiral County website, on the Planning Commission homepage, and on the Admiral County calendar. Participation will include the opportunity to comment on those matters for which comments from the public will be received. If Carolyn's online, we can call the roll, please.
Okay. Mr. Missile.
Coming.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Mr. Missile.
Here.
Ms. Firehawk.
Here.
Mr. Carazana.
Here.
Mr. Bivins.
Here.
Mr. Murray.
Here.
And Mr. Claiborne. Still absent.
Yes, he's absent. He's out of town on business for his profession. All right. So with that, we'll move forward into other matters not listed on the agenda from the public. Is there anyone here to speak to a matter that is not on the formal agenda this evening? Seeing no one rising, we will move on to the next item. We have the consent agenda. Oh, there. Let me just check what's on these. Is there anything that commissioners would like to pull from the consent agenda? It's just the approval of the draft session minutes and draft regular meeting minutes from September 27th, 2022.
So moved.
So move to adopt.
So moved to adopt.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, adopted and seconded. Any discussion? Can you call the roll, please, Carolyn?
Yes, can you tell me who's seconded? I couldn't tell who it was.
Mr. Missile.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Murray.
Aye.
Mr. Bivins.
Aye.
Mr. Carazana.
Aye.
Mr. Ms. Firehawk.
Aye.
And Mr. Missile.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. The consent agenda passes unanimously. We'll now move on to our first public hearing of the evening, SP 202200018, St. Paul's Ivy Preschool. May we have the staff report, please?
Yes, please. Rebecca Ragsdale, a planning manager, and I'll be doing the staff presentation this evening. Once we get it up on the screen there, just a second. So this is for St. Ivy's, excuse me, St. Paul's Ivy Preschool, and it is a special use permit request within an existing church building. Going to orient everyone to the location. It's at 851 Owensville Road, and the property is also accessed from Neves Lane. It is about 15 acres and is designated rural areas in the comprehensive plan, but zone village residential because it's in what used to be the, what we called villages in our older comprehensive plans. So there's some nearby commercial uses like Dooners and Scott's Ivy and Ivy Exxon along 250. It is near 250. I mentioned it's the existing church building that will be used for the preschool. The photo you saw earlier on the title slide was this portion of the building, the back of the building, where you see the the loop off, the drop off is where that will be. So to orient you, this is Owensville Road, and this is the Owensville Road and existing entrance entrance into the parking lot, which folks would then loop around here to drop off and then exit out onto Neves Lane. And then the portion of the building that would be used for the preschool is the lower level. There's some existing classrooms that will work well. And then the playground area is over here. There's also a cemetery and the edges are primarily buffered with trees. And then beyond the trees on the north is some lower density residential. This is just an overview slide of the proposal. It's a proposal for only 24 students. And as I mentioned, we went over what what would be used on the site, but this is their concept plan, which has some of the things labeled in terms of play areas and parking areas. There's also plenty of parking available for staff to tuck their cars behind the building. The hours would be from nine to 12, Monday through Friday, with an extended day option to 2:00 p.m. This has been reviewed by staff to consider the pickup and drop off, and VDOT has reviewed it and and didn't have any objections to the request. We've analyzed it against the criteria and the ordinance for special use permits and don't believe there would be any detriment to abutting properties or any transportation safety concerns, and did find it to be consistent with the comprehensive plan, given the size and scale of the use. And the comprehensive plan also mentions that there is a need for these types of services in the rural area. So we think this is would be a good location and is using only existing facilities and is pretty limited in size. I will note, we did have the community meeting, and there were a few in attendance. Many supportive of the school had a lot of questions about the school program, and some were bringing up traffic in the area, which is not uncommon. There was also an email that came through this week from one of the neighbors that had some concerns about Neves Lane primarily related to maintenance, which we'll follow up with VDOT on that. So the staff recommendation is for approval, and we've gone over our conclusions related to our reasons why. And we didn't have any concerns about this proposal. So with the recommendation of approval, I'll pause for questions. We have some conditions I can bring up on the screen, but the conditions cover the hours of operation, pick up and drop off primarily. And then with some of these school uses, as you've seen, we want to make sure that fencing is added where we think it's needed for safety.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for staff about this application? Hearing none. Thank you very much. We'll now hear from the applicant. So if you haven't testified to the County Planning Commission before, you'll see there's a set of lights on the on the podium there. Green is go. Yellow means you're running close to out of time, and red means stop. So you'll have a chance to present, and then we'll ask you questions. Then we will have the public to come up and speak if they would like to. And then we have a chance to call you back up if you want to add any additional clarification. So with that, we'll go ahead and get you started. Also, please state your name for the record, so we know who's talking for the minutes. You might ask, you might want to pull the bend the mic towards you.
Thank you. Allison Kretlow, and this is Audie Barlow, and I'll explain who we both are in just a second. Good evening. Thank you so much for this opportunity to talk a little bit about this project that we're very excited about. I'm Dr. Allison Kretlow, one of the two directors for the proposed preschool, and this is Audie Barlow, the Director of Children's and Youth Ministries at St. Paul's. I'll primarily be speaking on behalf of the preschool, but Audie is here to answer any questions that might arise that are more related to the church as a whole. And Melissa Kelly, the other co-director of the proposed preschool, is not here because she's feeling under the weather. Our rector, Father Justin McIntosh, is also here with us tonight. I know you had the opportunity to review the proposal, but if you would allow me just a moment to say a few words about a project that might be helpful in further understanding our goals, values, and intentions in starting this program. Just a little bit of personal information. My entire 19-year career has been focused on early childhood learning. My undergrad, masters, and PhD are all in early elementary and special education, and I've taught preschool, elementary school, provided teacher development with local counties, and worked in early intervention. When I became a mom of two young children, I decided to take a pause from full-time work in the field. The pause uniquely allowed me to see firsthand the needs of the Western Alamo County families with preschool-aged children, because I am one of those families. As the population growth in this part of the country or county has grown exponentially over the last 10 years, the preschool offerings have not really been able to keep up with the increased demand. Almost all of the Christian and secular preschools in the area have extensive wait lists, and families with children as young as a few months old feel pressured to secure a spot for their children who are two years away from actually attending school. We had one such family email us before the community meeting to say, I don't have any problems with this, but I have a three-month-old. Could we get started in your preschool? That just gives you an idea of like, you know, the level of of demand there is. Through happenstance, I was never planning on being a preschool director or opening a preschool. It's never even part, never on my radar. My co-director and dear friend of almost a decade, Melissa Kelly, and I both re-entered teaching in the last couple of years, both in preschool settings. And that work inspired a curiosity about why our own church that we love so dearly and feel very connected to did not have a preschool, even though we have the perfect space for it. So we reached out to the church, eventually prepared a proposal, and last spring it was approved by the governing board, the Vestry, with much enthusiasm. We then embarked on this special use permit process. We see this preschool as a true extension of our church's existing ministry. We did not embark on this adventure to create a profitable business, but rather a small, Christian-based educational experience that prepares children for kindergarten. We'll focus on Bible stories taught through the monastery curriculum, Godly Play, social-emotional learning, literacy, math, music, and art. We're committed to providing evidence-based early childhood education experiences that includes small staff-to-student ratios and regular opportunities for families to interact in the school and with us in the community. If you have specific curriculum questions, I'm more than happy to answer them. In closing, to paint a picture of the day-to-day, a maximum of 24 students across three classrooms, a total of four teachers, half-day program, nine to 12, with an optional stay-in-play for lunch and additional childcare. We estimate about 20% of families will opt to use the stay-in-play. We hope to serve families in the hyper-local area of Ivy and Croze. We're very excited about this possibility to contribute to our community in a meaningful and needed way. Thank you again for your time, and we look forward to answering any questions you have.
Okay, if that concludes your presentation, do commissioners have questions for the applicant? Mr. Bivins?
Thank you for coming coming this evening. Given what I believe is accurate accurately stated about the demand for preschool or demand for care for children, could you sort of describe why what? Why 24 seems to be the number and why a half-day seems to be the time?
So there's a few reasons. One being that the physical space that we have at St. Paul's, some of it has to be kept separate for our Sunday School classrooms. The Godly Play curriculum has a lot of materials, and they're very expensive, just to be like very upfront. It takes a lot of effort to set those up and to run those programs, and it would be extremely difficult for us to share that space on a daily basis. But we too do have two dedicated classrooms that can serve children that that come two days a week, three days a week, and then five days a week. The half-day is really in, you know, in accordance with what the literature says in terms of the attention span, activities that you can accomplish. And I think you will find in most preschools that the second half of the day is lunch, sleep, and play. So we also want to have an environment that really encourages family involvement as well. We're not looking for this to be a daycare. We're not looking for it to really be. That's I mean, it is childcare, right? But we're looking at it more from an educational perspective.
Okay, another question. Any other questions? Okay, I so it seems like we don't have any other questions for you at this time. I did attend the community meeting. It's a pretty straightforward application. You already have space within the existing building. You already have a circulation pattern for the traffic. So this particular application is not truly complex. And I think you made a good case at the community meeting that you mentioned a number of schools had closed in the area, preschool care that, you know, even made the demand higher than it than it already was. So with that, we'll give the public a chance to make any comments they would like, and then we'll invite you back up again. Thank you. Is there anyone from the public who would wish to comment on this application? Okay, seeing no one come forward, I'm closing the public portion of this. All right. And I'll take it back to the commission for, if you'd like to make another comment, even though the public has said nothing. Okay. All right. So with that, we'll just deliberate amongst ourselves. Any comments or concerns about this application? All right. Well, I don't I don't hear any any human.
I will just say, given you everyone's understood the sort of thrust of my question.
Yes.
We have, we have a need. We saw a group two weeks ago that was 35 there near Croze. Now we're going 24 at Ivy Village, if I may use that that language. And while that's good, it still doesn't seem like we're in that particular part of the county where we have a tremendous, if you look at some of the census stuff that came out, there's a need. And so I would just, I would just encourage the church, since it's a church with good with good resources and good people, to figure out a way to perhaps make a dent in 24.
Maybe down the road after they've.
Well, I think the same Paul's is a church with with much, which with many talented individuals, I believe if they put their head to it, they would could figure out how to solve several problems.
Okay, well, that is not something we're asking to do this evening. So with that, could you put the motions back up or put them up on the screen?
Oh, I put this.
All I'm seeing was a seal. Okay. All right. Well, since this is in my district, I will go ahead and make the motion. I move to recommend approval of SB 202200018, St. Paul's Ivy Preschool, with conditions as recommended in the staff report. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, seconded by Lonnie. Can we have any further discussion? Seeing none. Okay. With that, can you call the roll, Carolyn?
Yes, Ms. Firehawk.
Aye.
Mr. Missile.
Aye.
Mr. Carazana.
Aye.
Mr. Bivins.
Aye.
Mr. Murray.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, this motion passes unanimously. The next step is you move on to the Board of Supervisors, who has the final say. Our recommendation is just that, a recommendation for approval. They will have the final decision. Thank you very much for coming, and good luck. All right. So the next one, we have another school. SP 202200019, Keswick School, the Magisterial District of Ravanna. May we have the staff report?
Good evening, Chair Firehawk, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Kevin McCollum. I'm a senior planner with the Planning Division of Almar County. Tonight, I'll be giving staff's presentation on special use permit application, SP 202219, the Keswick School. This is a proposed special use permit amendment for a private boarding school in Keswick, Virginia. The subject property is located at 4075 Keswick Road, near the intersection of Keswick Road and Route 22, Louisa Road. It is located just east of the city of Charlottesville. The property is nearly 22 acres in a zone rural areas. The property has been home to a private boarding school known as the Keswick School since the 1960s. The property has several buildings and structures associated with the school, including dormitories, classrooms, gym, pond, playfield offices, and associated parking. The character of the surrounding area includes rural area uses, including low-density residential, agricultural uses, farmlands, a blacksmith, and some nearby churches. The most recent approved special use permit for the school was approved in 2007. The school also has an approved site plan. The maximum of enrollment for the school is currently set at 35 students. The applicant has requested an amendment to the Keswick School's existing special use permit to modify the conceptual plan to include a new arts center, a storage building, and a horse barn. There is no increase in student enrollment proposed. The applicant has indicated a need for these new structures as a result of a recent fire that destroyed one of the school's multipurpose buildings and to meet the needs of the student population. Conceptual plan on the screen here provides an overview of the school's entire campus, including what is existing and also what's proposed. The special use permit application was reviewed under the factors for consideration as outlined in the zoning ordinance. Staff believes the proposed new buildings that the, sorry, the proposed new buildings will not be detrimental to adjacent parcels, will not change the character of the nearby area, will keep the school in harmony with the rural area zoning district, and is consistent with the comprehensive plan. So further, staff found that the positive aspects for this application are the use is consistent with that with the comp plan and rural area plan. The proposal has no increase in student enrollment, and there's no detrimental impacts to adjoining properties anticipated. Staff did not identify any concerns associated with this application at this time. Staff recommends approval with the conditions as recommended in the staff report. And so that concludes my presentation. Like Rebecca, I have motions on the next slide, and I also have the conditions there if we want to pull those up. So thank you. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions for staff on this application? Go ahead.
So so, good evening. How are you? So my, I have this just sort of this fundamental question, like, why do they even have to go through this? Because it seems everything that they're coming for us tonight is the replacement of buildings that from the 2001 fire. And so my question is, if something burns down, and I just want to replace the thing that burned down, why do I have to come back and go through this process? I'm not saying I want a helipad. I'm saying I want to put back the barn which burned down and the art studio which burned down, according to the Stewart and Columbus letter. So I just, I wondered why they were even being put through this process, given there's no change of use.
Yeah, so there's kind of two parts of that. There's what's shown on the conceptual plan, and then what's shown on the approved site plan. And one of the conditions of that previous special use permit was that the site had to be in accord with that conceptual plan. So they're amending their special use permit conceptual plan, but we'll also have to come back in with a site plan amendment to actually develop those buildings.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Murray.
Yes, the, as I emailed staff previously, the conceptual plan shows several sewage disposal areas within the stream buffer, the 100 feet of the stream. And currently, the the stream is not vegetated between to the 100-foot buffer that we would normally have. I understand that a lot of this is because it's probably before our water protection ordinance was in place. And given the, in my understanding, is the the size of the barn is going to be increased, correct? So as in when, what are the mitigating factors there? Was the stocking rate of the horses there going to be put in that area? How are those impacts to the stream going to be mitigated?
Sure. We shared those comments with the applicant. I'm not sure if they can touch on it when they're up here, but we also talked about it with engineering. They said a lot of animal waste associated with agricultural uses are are kind of exempt from these water protection ordinances. So I'm not sure if there's anything else to add there.
That's accurate. So also with the special use permit, the water protection ordinance would apply to any of the new areas on this plan. It would not be grandfathered, you know, the old areas would be grandfathered in. It would not apply retroactively to previous facilities for for other structures on the site. Certainly, it's something that the applicant could offer, but not something that we would require as part of our process.
Just pointing out, in 2014, it would have applied before the ordinance was changed. Because the Bay Act would have required that the, if the buffer doesn't exist, it would have to be restored.
Okay. Other questions or comments? Okay. All right. Any other questions for staff at this time? Okay, with that, we have a, does the applicant have a presentation to make?
Yes, they do. It should.
All right. So come on up. Same rules as before. You have a set time limit. The green means go. Yellow means you're just about to run out of time, and red means stop. And you'll have a chance to come back up after we hear from the public if you want to add additional comments. Please state your name or the record into the mic. Is it not working yet? They'll help you.
We can just scroll. Yeah, you can just hit the arrow.
Thank you so much. It's all right. This trips everyone up.
Yeah.
My name is Mark Columbus. I'm the head of school at Keswick School. I've been head of school for 30 years. This is Donna Stewart from Abrahams and Company. They just helped us finish a restoration of the Keswick Depot, historic landmark there, the train.
Can you make sure you're just close to the mic?
The actual depot there. So we're happy with them, and they are preferred. They are our preferred contractor for this arts program. So Keswick School is known as a therapeutic special education boarding school. This year will be our 60th year of operation. We have boys that come from all the United States and abroad. We have boys that come from Hong Kong, Norway, Sweden, Egypt, Peru, Egypt, and the continental United States. We're nationally recognized for the work that we do. It's a therapeutic special education boarding school. Boys that come to us are between the ages of nine to 15 upon admissions. They don't usually graduate. They're about two years length of stay, strong clinical program. The boys may have diagnosis of ADHD, may have some anxiety or learning difficulties, could be on the spectrum, on the high end of the spectrum. It's not uncommon for boys to have average to superior IQs, 150, 160. So they're less sophisticated, sort of a little bit quirky. We had a boy just graduate from UVA School of Engineering or Elon College down the road. So the special use permit is really focusing on the replacement of a building that burnt down in March of 2021. So if we if we if we look at that and see the fire, just call at 3:00 in the morning, one of the older buildings, two-story, again, the replacement is a one-story building, spread it out a little bit more. It housed our art center, wood shop, art room, ceramics, a drama center, therapist's office, and some storage. So, you know, when you're looking at, you know, trying to replace all those, all those factors, it's a lot. The boys, some of their first experiences and successes have been in, you know, turning my first pin or my first bowl, or or I know you see a lot of boys on the spectrum that have a tendency to lean into acting because they all of a sudden, they they become someone different, you know, and they they experience those things. So arts is very much a part of that. The county helped us, and Abrahams and Company helped us renovate a garage. We added a section to it, a double garage, added about 15 feet, and we have a temporary shop in there. Art is now temporarily done in the in the library. So we're putting these pieces together. But again, it is for replacement, and we're not increasing enrollment. So there's the fire that night. Pretty, pretty traumatic for staff. We were all in there administratively, we're all in there by 3:00 in the morning, 3:30. We got the call about three therapists were working with kids at the time in the dorms, and we were able to very quickly with Abraham sort of mitigate Almar County. Chief Maddox came in and couldn't find the cause of the fire. It's an older building, so we're not, we're not sure. But means a lot to the kids as far as an art center and programming and what they're able to do. The to answer some of your program, some of your questions about. The, to answer some of your programs, some of your questions about the land and the facility down in the left-hand corner, the lower left-hand corner, can I move around, right here, was the building that burnt down. Okay, we're not building it there because it's in the floodplain. I mean, I think we were paying for ten, ten feet of the building was in the floodplain and I think we're ending up paying twenty thousand dollars a year for, for flood insurance, you know. I, I, I felt the pain of the people in, in Florida recently. I just couldn't believe it, but you know, the mortgage company wouldn't give us the mortgage without that. So so that's the reason that we're moving it back here. It is out of the water protection ordinance buffer, made clear that we would do that. It's all one story now. Arts, we'll, we'll look at the floor plan real quickly. This is an art center and then ceramics and arts, multipurpose STEM room, and then drama and, and assembly. With that, when we lost the barn, we lost our storage area because right now the storage area, the garage right here was turned into a temporary shop. So we're building a, a Henrico County, my, my, my daughter lives close there. They have the green buildings in, in keeping and we'll do some plannings around it with, you know, two doors where we can have storage for residential equipment. They do a lot of biking and canoeing and things like that. So we would have that. We are not planning on increasing enrollment. We're going to keep it thirty-five. It's the, you know, so we're, we, it's just the quality of programming. We got to get back in the facility. The, we had drawings of, of the, of, of the barn, which is located right there. I think the footprint is only increased by just a few square feet to, you know, if we were going to renovate that down the road. I think planners said this is the point in time to put it in. You asked about the special use permit and I think if we are a little bit savvy, more savvy than we were years ago, we would have put some of these things in there. So we don't have to keep coming, coming back, but this was out of necessity because of the footprint of this building being different from the one here that was in the floodplain and burned down. We only have seven horses. It's, it's a equine program for special needs kids. The horses, we lease out this field here. And we lease out a field across, across seven thirty-one on a farm owned by Vicki and Mark Columns. So the only time the horses are brought into riding is, is when it's time to ride and they, you know, come in through here and they come in through this gate and, and, and come around. There's a, there's a dam right here and they come around to riding. It's not a barn where the horses stay in the barn. The, the horses stay in the fields. And so that mitigates, you know, horse manure. You know, I mean, there's only going to be a couple of times the horse maybe oon in a riding ring during, during riding, but it's not that massive sort of stall area or keeping area where they just keep, keep the horses in there and keep, keep it going. I think, I think I'm certainly happy to answer any of your questions. This is the profile of, of the building now that we're thinking about. All one level, real simple, poured. Should be pretty cheap by Abraham's. Help us out. Nothing cheap. We, we started construction of the depot when all the prices tripled, you know, so I would say I have a heart attack. But this is, this is great. The only comment I can have here is the cost of, of moving the southwest mountains on the other side of the, of the facility was going to be the, the expensive part. You can see the artist, artist takes, artist's privilege in moving those mountains behind the building. It doesn't look like that. So I don't want to leave in for the, and then the actual footprint itself, just recreating the wood shop. A multipurpose STEM usage in the middle. And then the art center, we, we have several boys that, you know, we can use it, the, the, the center one for music. They play violin, cello, guitar, things of that nature. Get our ceramic program back and the arts and then, and then, and then have our, our drama facility. So really just replacement, not increasing that population. Great boys, great school. Any questions?
Okay. Any questions for the applicant at this point, Mr. Missile?
Just one in curious curiosity, what do you use the depot for?
So the depot back in ninety-two, the East Ramana Volunteer Fire Department owned Stokes of England. And they also owned, owned the fire, the, the fire department as well. The depot. And then, so they sold it to both Bob Wilson at the time, Bob and Libby Wilson, who owned the school privately. We've been a nonprofit now for six years. And so at that point, we, we bought it from Steve and, and we use it for a dining facility and, and, and meeting place. But we had a donor, you know, for a little school like this to, to come in and, and give a huge donation. Kevin had a chance to see, see it. It is, it is spectacular. From, from front to back. It's, it's wonderful. I can, you know, invite you all to come out and see it. Got a chef from New York too that came in. So everything from scratch. So good, good stuff.
Thank you. I was fishing for an invitation. So that's
Yeah, so that's yeah, absolutely, absolutely Fred. You should come out and see it. It's a great place.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, and thank you for answering my questions. That, that, that answers my concerns. I, I would not a condition, just strongly encourage you if you don't already to work closely with your extension agents and the local conservation districts on best management practices for those, those horses and anything you can do to
Yeah, we, we do. A couple of years ago, we had a four H, a, a four H club there, you know, to help the kids. So we had, you know, we worked with Southern states and an extension agent that, that was helping us out a little bit too.
And there is some, there's, there's some great programs.
Yeah, there are. Absolutely. Especially for these, these kind of boys.
Okay. Are there any other questions for the applicant?
I would just ask you to do one thing.
Sure, go ahead.
Ms. Stewart, before you take your, take this to the, to the supervisors regardless of what happens here, if you would just change the, make the date the correct date of the fire, please. Because on your, on your letter, it says twenty twenty, but the fire actually happened in twenty twenty-one.
Yeah, you're correct. You're correct. March of twenty twenty.
Right. You said it. You said it correctly. He's just saying in the letter. Yeah, you did. He's just referring to the document.
Okay. Did I write that document?
You didn't write the document. Your colleague.
Well, she's working so hard that I we don't know where to work.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, well, we'll, we'll ask you to take your seat and then we will see if anyone from the public would like to speak and then you have another chance to come back up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Is there any members of the public who would like to speak to this application? Is there anyone online, Carolyn, who wanted to speak to this?
No ma'am, there sure isn't.
Okay. All right. So not hearing any members of the public, is there anything else the applicant wishes to tell us? Can't see you now. No, okay. All right. So the applicant doesn't need to tell us anything else on this. So with that, we'll close the public hearing portion and then bring you back to commission for any deliberation. So this is in Commissioner Claiborne's district. He's absent tonight due to a business commitment. So, anyone have a comment?
I, I just had one small comment and this is in the conditions. It mentions planting Leyland cypress and Leyland cypress are notoriously disease-ridden trees. So I would recommend something that's a more of a native, like a cedar. That's more likely to take and hold.
You're exactly right on the, on the Leyland cypress. I think adapting our tree recommended planting list is, is will be part of our zoning ordinance update, I hope.
Even Thujia occidentalis would be. Sorry, I mean, even Thujia occidentalis would be not a, not normal native, but it's native one county over.
Possibly good enough. All right. Any other comments on this particular application? All right. If not, is anyone interested in making a motion for this?
I'm happy to make a motion. I move to recommend approval of SP twenty twenty-two zero 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 nineteen, the Kewick School with conditions as stated in the staff report.
Second.
All right. It was motioned and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Carolyn, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Murray?
Hi.
Mr. Bivins?
Hi.
Mr. Karazan?
Hi.
Ms. Firehawk?
Hi.
Mr. Missile?
Hi.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you very much. So to the applicant, I can't see you. This goes now to the board of supervisors. Our role is to recommend, we have recommended approval. They have the final say in the matter and sorry for your fire, but you did an excellent job in preparing your materials. So it was very easy to understand. So thank you for that and good luck. All right, we're going to move on now to the third item, third public hearing for this evening. SP two zero two two zero 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 six Crown Orchard Farm Worker Housing. As a changing of the staff guard. It's got a moment to settle in. All right, we're ready for the staff report. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a special use permit request for a farm worker housing facility in the Cozville area. This is the location on US twenty-nine south. Parcel in red there, one oh nine seven A is across the road from the existing Crown Orchard apple packing facility. You can see on the right there, the larger structure. And just to give you an idea of the context, here is the subject parcel adjacent to the Batesville Historic District. Which is a historic district that reflects the history of the growth of Cozville around the fruit growing and apple packing industries and the associated railroad and transportation improvements in the, in the nineteenth century. This is just a really poor area view of the current state of the property. Apologize for the parcel lines being jagged there, but the parcel in blue in this case is the subject parcel. And you can see there's the, the entrance here. There's a large field area and then an existing line of pine trees at the back. As I'll show you in a moment, the new facility would be west or behind those pine trees from US twenty-nine. And again, you can see the packing facility is directly across the road. This shows the whole property, but from the other perspective, from the north, it's still the way we can get the whole view to show there. But this trailer, which I believe is, is since been removed, is about where the new facility would go. This is the entrance from US twenty-nine. You can see there's also a line of trees along twenty-nine blocking the view of the interior of the property. So what's being proposed is a class B farm worker housing facility. So this is a facility that hosts more than ten people or has more than three structures. In this case, it would be fifty workers and one onsite manager in two structures. The reason it's two structures is that our ordinance is designed to ensure that a farm worker housing facility does not shift over into being a regular dwelling unit for non-farm use. So what we require is that their facilities be separated in some manner. The way this particular applicant has chosen to do that is to have nearly all the facilities for sleeping, bathing and all of that in the dormitory structure, which is the larger one that I'll show you in a moment. And then a smaller structure for kitchen dining. So that we have that separations required in the ordinance. The workers for this facility will arrive and depart by vans, not in individual vehicles. And except for the onsite manager, of course. So here is a zoom in view of the conceptual plan for the use. Down here at the bottom right corner is the, that existing entrance that I showed you. They would use that existing entrance. And back behind this wooded area, which is labeled to remain, you've got the larger structure is about a hundred and thirty feet long, which is the dormitory structure. And then the separate forty-foot or so structure for the kitchen and dining area. This boundary of the property closest to that structure is adjacent to the Batesville Historic District that I showed you on the map. So we worked with the applicant to increase the screening. There's a thin existing tree line there, but we've got a, a twenty-foot addition of additional screening. And of course, this wooded area here would remain to protect the view from US twenty-nine, the entrance quarter. And to, I mentioned those augmented screening, we also have a condition recommended that would use muted earth tone colors on these structures to further reduce their visibility. We had no particular concern with consistency with the comprehensive plan. Harmony with the ordinance has been assured through a review of the supplemental regulations for this use, which is mentioned in your staff report. Character of the area, this is a large parcel agricultural area and a historic district. We felt that was farm worker housing was consistent with the longstanding agricultural uses in the area. So two favorable factors, one that supports agricultural and uses in the rural areas. And two, there are no significant safety concerns with the entrance that's already there. The site is directly adjacent to Cozville Historic District. However, between screening and setbacks and color control, we felt that those impacts would be minimized. Therefore, staff recommends approval with the following conditions. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you have about the review or about the conditions.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, it seems to be a significant number of people. How is septic going to be handled on that site?
VDH and the state regulatory bodies have very strict controls for the standards for larger residential facilities like this. That's not something that's really within the county regs because we know that there is higher level state regulation of how these facilities are handled. They will have to go through a detailed VDH review to get appropriate wells and septic fields that are permitted for this higher level, level of occupancy on the site.
So they'll have to get their permission from Virginia Department of Health before they can occupy that. All right. Luis, you had a question?
Can you go back to the site plan? I just had a couple of questions. I didn't quite make out what so so what is that long? It, you have that hash pattern. It's, so it's north up here? I don't see any north. North is up. So to the south of the north hour would be good to get in this. So to the south of the proposed buildings, you have that long. Yeah, what, what is that against?
That's the augmented, that's the augmented screening area where they're adding that extra twenty feet of trees and shrubs to interrupt the view through that fairly thin hedgerow there.
That's more plantings that they would be doing.
And so where is the property? Isn't it?
The property line is, yeah, the property line is here inside this, this other hatch here is the existing tree line, which is fairly narrow.
So what, what is the line?
Right on the tree line.
What is the line that's just north of the, that augmented?
That's a setback. Well, yeah, and that, and that seventy-five feet is actually quite a bit. That's from the farm worker housing regs. That's actually quite a bit more than the standard. I think it's twenty-five or thirty-five feet that's required for regular residential facilities.
Yeah, I see fifty foot setback and then seventy-five. I just couldn't see the property line. Hard to see with that. Yeah. Thank you.
All right, go ahead, Mr.
So I have a couple, just a couple of questions. So and, and perhaps the, the applicant could speak to this. I saw, I'm assuming that this is a single-sex housing or same-sex housing. I'll let the applicant speak to that.
Okay, thank you. Then the other thing that I have a question of and can you give me the rationale be, around four? Colors of the exterior building materials on the structures must be muted earth tones that blend with the landscape and are subject to the county approval. Why is that being put on a structure that is behind trees? That is so far off the road that the only thing that can, the only place that can, can see it is a piece of property that's been given to the county. I think that's that walnut, not walnut creek. It's that, that it's that land across, across twenty-nine that those two gentlemen gave to the county. Yet another part that the county got as a gift. I, I just, I will be upfront, Chair. I will not vote for that if we're going to make a place that is, that is, that these young men are coming here to do work. And we're going to say that's got to look like, you know, you're in the army now. I'm just
Well, that's a, a staff condition. You don't have to accept all the staff recommended.
I'm saying the staff right now that I
I'm saying the staff right now that I'm accept that. And then the other thing that I.
Well, do you want, you want staff to respond to your?
Here we give it to them.
I thought he was going to say something just a moment.
Yeah, I'll be glad to. We, we heard quite a bit from neighbors at the community meeting. Folks that live across 29 and I believe the former owner of this property to the south in the historic district. They were very concerned about visibility of the new structures. And so we were just trying to apply whatever controls we had.
That they would see through the trees to the structure?
I, I understand. People were asking for as much visual control as we could supply. So that's what we attempted to do. I appreciate, I thank you. I appreciate that. And I will go on my rant about is it the county's role to say what palette I can paint my house when having driven out there. There were some structures that I saw, some homes that were just offended my sensibility of color choices that I'd like to get the county to go look at. But this isn't where it is. It's just how I get annoyed at these kinds of things. So my other thing I was going to ask about, but thank you for that. Thank you for telling me that. It was neighbors saying that they wanted to see
the maximum screening potential, including color choice of buildings.
Basically the holiday in colors. Um, the other thing that I'm, that I would like to know a little bit about, about five. So in your plan, you say that we, or in somebody's plan, you said that we can have up to 14, I assume those are 14 sort of worker cars in the parking lot. I assume that's what that's for.
Up here at the top where it says parking up to 14 cars.
And that's just a note that was, that wasn't something we asked for.
That's not something we asked.
No, that's just something the applicants put that, that note on there. I think between the 15 passenger vans that they will use and the onsite managers vehicles, I doubt that there will be 14 there most of the time, but the applicants can answer. We mainly wanted, our main concern was, which they addressed, was to put the parking both behind the trees and behind the structure to minimize visibility.
That makes sense. Then I didn't understand what the rationale for saying that that people can only leave and come to the, that workers or residents, I should say, can only come and leave the property if they're in shared, shared transportation. Why do we, why do we care about that as a condition of them putting worker housing there? Why does the county care about that?
The, the applicants had that in their original description of the use. That's how they've operated other facilities in the past. And they plan to continue. And that was part of their rationale for why this was an approvable use, because they felt they had minimal traffic impacts. Because we heard from neighbors and nearby residents that they were concerned about increased traffic. We went ahead and put that into the condition. Just to lock that in place to make sure that for the long term, that mode of operation would stay in place. But that's typical for seasonal farm worker housing in that part of Almarle Nelson.
So I, so I would appreciate that. That's, that's a, that's a, that's that's a business, that's an operation decision by the owner of the business. Again, I'm asking, why is the county sort of entering into what is a business decision? Because I would say if anybody, we should have some vans that should be to, to Potter's Brew or Potter's Sideray. Where the cars coming off of that mountain will be leagues more than the few vehicles that are becoming off of there. So I get that, that the owner of the business may say, my employees are going to take our van. My question is, why is the government saying that you business owner from now until eternity have to advance, have to advance traffic there?
I think that our perspective in the special use permits, as long as it's safe, as long as VDOT feels that it's safe. That's all we need to know.
But we're not necessarily wedded to, well, it's changed. I think it's six now.
But because the applicants described the use that way, and because that was of concern to nearby residents, we felt it was appropriate to make that a condition.
I'm just pushing my.
Sure, I understand. Yeah. And we'll hear more from the applicant. I have other questions, but they're more appropriate for the applicant. Does anyone else have any other questions for staff? Mr. Missile, did you?
No, ma'am.
Okay. All right. So with that, thank you very much, Mr. Clark. We're ready to hear from the applicant. You just, I think you've heard my spiel already about the green, yellow and red lights. We dispense with that. We just need your, your names for the record for the minutes.
Very good. My name is Huff Childs. This is my wife Judy Childs. Thank you all for hearing us this evening and our family owns and operates Crown Orchard. We've been in the fruit business for over 100 years in this county. And the, back in the day, all the old timers, you know, worked on apple farms and in orchards and in different parts of Ag. You know, Ag was a big part of this county. It still is. And, but production ag, like fruit production like we do. There were locals to do the work. Now, there, there are very few locals that want to participate in growing apples, all the hand job, the, the work that has to be done all by hand, the picking, the thinning and so forth and so on. So we have a tremendous need for this building to accommodate our workers. And my wife is going to speak just a little bit more, but we certainly appreciate you all listening to us and entertaining this. And we look forward to your approval.
Thank you.
Good evening. I guess at our hearing that we had before the public input, there was questions as to why Colesville location. One of the main reasons, well, there are two main reasons. One is we currently operate a farm worker housing that is located in Colesville on a piece of property that we lease, which is going to be ending here before long. And we need a place that we can house our workers. Colesville is a good place for that. It's right across from our packing and storage facility. And also it's the proximity to several of our orchard locations. So it just makes sense to have it there. It will be all same sex housing. Currently it's all males that we employ. We have to take advantage of the H2A program where we do provide housing and transportation for the workers. And, you know, without, without them and a place to house them, agriculture is, I hate to say kaput. We've been doing this for a long time and have currently three generations of the Childs family working in the operation. Huff's father, ourselves, his sisters and our children. So we've been here for a long time. I don't know. Are y'all familiar with Crown Orchard? Do you invite? Okay, great. And you know, we operate Childs Beach Orchard, Carter Mountain Orchard and you know, love to provide agritourism and, and teach everyone along the way. So we ask that you would consider and grant us special use permit for farm, farm labor housing.
Okay, if you, if you remain up here for a moment, we might have some questions for you. I'll, I'll ask a question. I just, I know that you know, their main purpose in coming is to pick apples during the season, but I'm just curious about sort of like any outdoor space, like it just looks like there's a parking lot in a building. And you know, like, I know they've been outside all day and they're probably hot and tired, but it just seems like I've noticed some of the motels in Charlottesville that end up with some of the migrant workers. They end up outside barbecuing and, and hanging out outside. And I just wondering if you're providing any kind of like outdoor space or patio or anything for them to not be sort of stuck in their dormitory.
Right.
Sure. I mean, with this, with this parcel, there is room for that. It's some of our what we'd like to do is have a grassy area where they can play volleyball or a lot of gentlemen like to play soccer and
Right.
and so there is enough space there for that. And we would be happy to do that.
Okay. Go ahead.
Yeah, just, just to add on to that, I mean, I'm, I'm less concerned about a lot of the things that were mentioned there about, you know, the color of the building and whatnot, more about the quality of life for the workers. And so certainly any of things that you can do to make that a more livable experience for them.
Sure.
I know it can't be pleasant being away from home in a foreign country and you know, working all day in an apple orchard. So anything that can be done to improve their quality of life is something that, that I would.
Certainly, certainly. And we would, we would be glad to, and we, you know, we you know, take, we have to provide transportation. So we take the workers to town and to laundromat and to you know, to Walmart and wherever twice a week. So they're getting out and about some. But most, most of these gentlemen are here for a specific period of time, but whether it be four months, six months, eight months. But they want to work. I mean, they're here for one reason and one reason only is they want to make as much as they can to provide for their families that are at home. But I do hear what you're saying and I agree with that.
And just to add to that, the facility will have washer dryer. I mean, so they'll be able to do the laundry there, or if they want to take it out when they go out, they can do that also. Another thing is a lot of these workers have been coming year after year. They, you know, if we weren't doing things right, I don't think they would come back. So a lot of them have and my employees are long-term employees. We, you know, we'll even the golden rule. You know, treat others as you like to be treated yourself. And that's, has worked for us.
Okay. And go ahead, Luis.
Yeah, just wanted to follow up in the, the same vein of more comments and questions, but on the, on the housing that we, we're not, we're not seeing a lot of information, obviously on the, it's just a, the site plan. I'm assuming it's just a one, one story. It's, it's got a significant south facing to it, predominantly south, maybe not directly south. Anything you can do there with a screen, a porch, something to create shade. That would also help you with your energy use. So there's some passive solar design that you can put into. We used to build homes like that regularly just to save on energy. We didn't have air conditioning at some point, right? So so think about that. And I think it would, it would help both with energy use and, and their comfort level. And just having a, a, a front porch or porch that extends out in the south face there will provide that shade and also think will provide for some of that comfort that they could potentially just hang out outside after work under, under some shade. So.
Okay. No comments?
Good, good evening, Mr. and Mrs. Charles. So my comment, you heard my, my sort of challenging to, to our good staff, but I don't have to challenge them every now and then. So my concern is, and it goes along with the quality of life, that you've got people who've been displaced from their home. Yes, they come here for a better economic economic opportunity, but the whole idea is to, to give them a space that in fact, while they're working, they go back, they recharge, they're ready to come and work again for you tomorrow. That's one of the reasons why I was sort of put off by the putty colored holiday in and hopefully the colors would be, would be enlivened and would be something that people would feel when they came home at the, after a hard day of going, doing good work for you. That'd be a good place for them to be during that time. So that's why I'm, I'm not supportive of that. The other piece is that this item number five, in my opinion, is your decision how you move people back and forth off of your property. Right now you're using that visa, the foreign worker visa to get here.
Correct.
We don't know if that's going to be the only way for people to come here in the future. While I hope we don't live through another grape of wrath event. I pray that that doesn't happen to us. There may be a moment where people need to work for you and they have their vehicle. Again, that's your decision about what the economy looks like in the future. That doesn't feel appropriate for the government to tell you how you're going to move your staff on and off your, on and off your property. If that's what you and your spouse decide to do, bravo. But that should be a business decision. That should not be a regulation that goes along with this piece of property.
I certainly agree. And that, that's just the way we have been doing it in the past. But I do agree.
I'm sorry, I missed the last part of what you just said. You agree what?
I agree with what he said there, but I just, I wanted to, I guess, reiterate that that's just the way we had done it in the past. So when we were meeting with the planner, we, that's just what we had talked about.
Well, I assume if that wasn't there, you wouldn't be offended.
No.
No, not at all. Not at all. No, thank you. And, and to answer the other gentleman's question, the building will have solar. We do have commitment. Once we get approval to build this building to, to power it with solar.
Okay.
That's already in place.
Great. Yeah. Okay. Any other questions for the applicant at this time? Okay, we may ask you to come back up to answer a few more questions. Thank you. All right. People in Colesville. So would anyone from the public like to speak to this matter? Yes, sir. Please come, come up. Take your time. All right. When you get up, you just need to tell us your name for the record. And you've probably heard you have green light means start. So don't start till the green light starts. Yellow means you're almost out of time and red means stop.
It'll take two minutes. My name's Sandra Tucker. I'm, I guess, representing the village of Colesville here tonight. I'm the oldest resident of Colesville unless her father is older than me possibly. I'm not here to oppose this or speak for it. I just sort of want to speak for the village of Colesville. I've lived there for 60 years. I've seen very little changes. But from my house, which is directly across the road from this property, I look out every day at this property, all of it. All of it. The solar panel, the logging operation on the mountain. And now this. And I guess what I want to say is want you people to be aware of what possibly could happen here. And I don't know what that is. But Colesville is a rural community, a small friendly village. And I would like to keep it that way. I can't say we because like I said, I'm the only one here. But I look at it every day. And after this is said and done, if it's built, I don't know what I will see. But as I said before, I'm not opposed to property. I understand where they're coming from. They've got a business to run. And they've got to do it in order to make certain amount of profit. But I'm going to just conclude by saying, I guess, that I don't particularly want to look at this. And I'm not sure based on what I've seen on the drawings that if it's screening, I might not be able to see these buildings. But the neighbor directly south of this is right in their back door. Well, actually it's front door. I can't speak with them either. But let's be aware of what is going on in Colesville. And let's don't turn it into another prosa. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, sir. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to speak to this matter? Carolyn, is there anyone online?
No, ma'am, there sure isn't.
Okay. So with that, we'll end the public portion. The applicant has a chance to come back up and address any comments. Do you wish to do so? Okay, that's fine. All right. So I'll bring it back to the commission for deliberation. All right. So we heard some comment. I'm not sure if it, the comment we just heard really addressed the question of the muted colors. So I'm still not clear if the building is actually visible from that distance. I know that some of the foliage will be off the trees in the winter, but can you, can you tell us?
As far as I could tell, the building will not be visible from 29. We haven't done a GIS analysis, but I don't believe it's visible. It's possible if those pine trees were to burn down or something or die from beetles, that that would increase visibility, but there's still the deciduous trees along the highway. However, a lot of the concern was not with the colors and all that was not as much from 29 where the facility is almost 800 feet back from the road. But the adjacent historic district. So just trying to address the concern of visibility from there. We have some increased plantings and setbacks of 75 feet. But the colors were just trying to boost that a bit.
Okay.
So it's more about.
It seems fairly well screened. And if you look at the aerials and you look for the nearest house, it's still really far.
The nearest house in the historic district to the south is, if I remember quickly, about 350 feet.
Yeah, that's pretty far.
Yeah.
It's pretty far away. Okay. All right. Thank you for that clarification.
So I just wanted, wanted to echo our colleague. Commissioner Bevins, I do, I, I think they're not appropriate items to put in as, as conditions. First of all, earth tone colors. And so the earth tone in my house is, is red. I mean, it is a very red clay. So we could, you know, it could be a red building. I don't know if that's what they, what they are looking for or not. But so I, I just think it's not appropriate. You could certainly the neighbors can have conversations and say, you know, maybe I like this color.
Well, you could also make the case that if you plant.
And maybe that's, that's a way to deal with it. But I don't think it's appropriate for, for again, for for the county to be imposing a particular color. And certainly I don't think it's the role of, of us. And I, and I second the, the, the point on the, on the transportation as well. Um, and I, and I second the, the, the point on the, on the transportation as well. I don't think that's something that's, that's going to be imposed there. You know, we impose it now, it's there, right? So then if you deviate from that, you got to come back again and then we have to talk about them adding, okay, well, now we want to change the, the method of transportation.
One, six. And I, and I was listening to your apologies. I forgot my computer glasses, so I'm really having trouble. I can see everyone brilliantly well. Of course, I did review all the plans before coming to see you. I can see. All right. Uh, so with that, um, it seems like there is support for this application, but, um, several commissioners are not in support of conditions four and six. Uh, and I'm fine with that because I understand the point of, I'm sorry.
Madam Chair, just to clarify, I noticed there's a discrepancy in the numbering of the conditions between the slide on the screen and the numbers of the conditions in the staff report. Um, it seems like number two on the slide on the screen is part of paragraph number one in the staff report. So if there's a motion to approve, but with certain conditions deleted, we should be clear which, which conditions are being deleted.
So it's three and five.
Three and five in the staff report are the ones that have been up for discussion. They're number four and six on the screen.
All right, well, I'll go with three and five in the staff report.
I think that's probably preferable. Yes, ma'am.
Finding document. And I have a Zoom feature on my tablet so I can see.
Oh, and, and I see that Mr. Clark has, has fixed the numbering on the slide, so.
Apologies for that. And now it's like it, now it's like it is on our staff report.
Okay, awesome. All right. So with that, um, I'd like to make, unless there's any other discussion or objections, I'd like to make a motion in support of SP two zero two two zero 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 six with the conditions of, uh, the staff report of one, two, and four. May I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Bivens. Any other further discussion on this application? I actually just want to make a quick note too about, it's very important to be able to provide safe, sanitary and attractive housing for our migrant workers because we do not have other options for them in the rural area. That is a problem. That is something the county needs to own. And, and when we have applications like this, it's because of the need. So, um, with that, uh, Carolyn, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Missile?
Aye.
Miss Firehawk?
Aye.
Mr. Karazana?
Aye.
Mr. Bivens?
Aye.
Mr. Murray?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, with that, the motion carries unanimously and we recommend, uh, approval to the Board of Supervisors. As we said repeatedly tonight, they have the final say, but we wish you good luck. And a healthy apple harvest. I'm probably jinxing you now. All right. We will now, does anyone need, on the commission, need to take a break for any reason? Okay. Ring your roll. What? Yes, no? Okay, so, okay. I'm fine. All right. We're going to move on to the next item for this evening, which is SP two zero two two many zeros for Scottsville Substation Expansion Project. Is that you, Mr. Clark, again?
Me.
All right, take it away.
Thank you. This is a special use permit request for, uh, an existing substation. This substation predates the zoning ordinance and so has been there for longer than we've had zoning. And in order to expand, it needs to come into compliance with the ordinance. So this is, uh, just to give you an idea of the location on James River Road west of Scottsville. There are two parcels. For those of you who are familiar with the area and with the substation, the southern of the two parcels is the actual current substation. The second parcel to the north until recently was a separate residential parcel. However, due to the need for space for, uh, current stormwater requirements from the state, the applicants, uh, the utility has acquired that parcel, uh, to combine it into the existing substation facility. An overview of the conceptual plan for the use, again, here in the southern portion, there's the uh, substation itself or several pieces of equipment are being replaced, um, due to their age. And then we've got, uh, screening vegetation to the east and to the west that's being added. Uh, and then the blue areas here are stormwater channeling that are then being carried under the existing road here to the further, uh, facilities. And then to address a, uh, site distance issue at the northeast corner here, there is a new entrance. So this will be the entrance for the substation facility that maintenance trucks and construction trucks will enter. However, this existing road that accesses the residential lots to the west will remain and will continue to be used, uh, by the residential or by the resident there who have access to it. This is just a closer view of, uh, the southern portion. You can see the pad expands slightly. So there's some grading here and some additional screening vegetation that's being added there and here along the driveway and then the rear of the parcel where some existing vegetation would have to be removed for the channeling of the stormwater flow. Uh, there's a row, a staggered row of trees that would be included there to restore some of the visual screening for the properties to the west. Again, with the north, you've mainly got the entrance and stormwater facilities. So other than the period of construction, we didn't feel that there was a, any real impact on the adjacent properties or on the character of the area. And again, this is a, a facility that feeds all the uses in the area and it's longstanding. So we didn't feel there was any conflict with the comprehensive plan.
County Corner Drive.
So in favor, we found that the proposed upgrade meets utilities need for upgrading without creating significant new impacts in the rural area. Uh, we didn't find unfavorable, uh, factors for this proposal. Uh, we're recommending approval with one condition, which is compliance with that, uh, substation conceptual plan you saw before. Uh, specifically referring to the new screening vegetation and the vegetated areas to remain um, as, as seen on that plan. Uh, I'm happy to take any questions. I know the applicants are here to, uh, address any concerns you might have.
Questions for staff, Mr. Murray?
Yeah, just, just out of curiosity, I noticed the proposed landscaping that covers the plant guide covers the screening vegetation, but doesn't say anything about this, the stormwater, uh, detention facility. Um, I assume there's a planting list for that as well and that that would include.
I don't, I don't know. The applicants have done the final engineering for that area to that level of detail, but they could probably answer that better than I can. My main concern with the vegetation, uh, for this one was, was the screening areas and the replacement in the areas where there's grading going on. Uh, it seemed that there was still quite a bit of, well, I shouldn't say quite a bit, final engineering to be done for those stormwater areas, but they may be able to tell you more about that.
Oh, I assume that staff will work closely with applicant to, on.
Yeah, and they've already worked quite a bit with, uh, Frank Paul, the county engineer in, uh, reviewing this conceptual plan to make that, make sure that, uh, he was on board with the, the design they had laid out.
Mr. Missile has a question.
Thanks, Scott. That was a, a really thorough, um, report. Thank you. Yeah, quick question. Uh, if you could go back to the site plan just for a minute?
I'm sorry, do we slide?
Site plan. I'd like to see that again.
Right there. Uh, one more back.
More back.
Yes, right there. So I don't know if there's room or not, but I'm just thinking about screening from the road, um, which is to the right, correct?
Right, yeah. We actually talked with the applicants quite a bit about that. Um, and tried to figure out if there was a way to screen there.
Yeah.
The issue is that the, the substation facility is already very close to the road.
Right.
And there's quite a bit of, uh, bank there.
Yeah.
And.
Say that word again. I'm sorry, quite a bit of what?
Just slope.
Flow.
Down from the, from, from the, uh, from the pad area to, to the road. There's a short distance, quite a drop. And so it was difficult to put screening in there that would be maintainable over time. But the other real big, uh, issue for the applicants was safety. Um, either with the screening vegetation or animals getting into the substation or with members of the public being able to climb through that vegetation or get it into the, the area. So, uh, they need to be very careful about anything that might lead to a person or vegetation grounding out their facilities and carrying that, that current load, so.
Sorry, I, not to challenge what you're saying, just to help clarify a bit, there's a row, double row of vegetation just above your arrow right there.
Right, and that's new vegetation.
Yeah, understood.
That we asked them to put in to kind of make up for the fact that there wasn't much here right by the road.
Sure. And then if you come down, you see that, I can't tell what that is, L O D? Oh, that's the limits of disturbance. Okay, so within the limits of disturbance and between what is probably a chain link fence, there's about enough distance that it could contain a single row of the shrubs or screening material.
Right, and we pointed that same thing out and the, they had the concerns about them being too close to the fence for their electrical safety and for security on the site.
Huh, okay. I'm going to ask the applicant. Thank you.
And any other questions for staff? All right, if not, I think we're ready to hear from the applicant. Thank you. Is anyone here way in the back there? Come on down. All right, good evening. We just need you to state your name and affiliation for the record.
Sure.
And you may need to adjust the mic if short or tall people are there before you.
All right. All right, there we go. Um, good evening, Madam, Madam Chair, members of the planning commission. My name's Daniel Fraser. I'm with Power Engineers, uh, engineering and environmental consultant, supporting Appalachian Power with the Scottsville Substation Expansion Project, SP twenty-two zero four. Joined by Scott Markwell, a project manager from Appalachian Power and other members of the project team, who should be able to answer all the questions this evening. Um, thank you for this opportunity to present the plans for this expansion of the existing, um, AppCo substation uh, on James River Road. Um, thank you to Mr. Clark for the, the time. We have spent a lot of time back and forth working through these plans and some of these questions that you've already, um, identified. So as, uh, Mr. Clark described, I, I will cover briefly, you know, what the, the project involves expanding, uh, the existing um, Scottsville substation, um, as, um, it also will, uh, for relocate the access road to the, the substation to address some safety concerns and then constructing stormwater detention pond to manage water from, uh, the new access road and the existing substation site. So I'll touch briefly on the why behind, um, the project. And I think there are three key drivers that, that, um, we, we mentioned at the community meeting and also I'll touch on here. Um, number one, it enhances reliability by replacing aging equipment that has reached the end of its useful life. Um, the, the substation has been on this property for at least the last eighty years. Um, and so by replacing the transformers and distribution banks from the nineteen fifties, um, with, with modern equipment, and that will result in a more reliable, uh, electric grid, uh, a- a- across, uh, the electric grid. Even though the, the substation is located west of Scottsville, uh, one weak link in the chain, it is not something we want. Um, so second, it accommodates future growth in Alboraro County. Um, there, there are customers served from that substation and, and we also are, uh, will be increasing the capacity of, of the, the substation with this upgrade and expansion. And thirdly, it improves safe access to the substation. And this is something that's, uh, important to Appalachian Power for, um, the, the employees that are servicing the substation often in the, uh, worst weather conditions, you know, the, not, not the best times of year. Um, so I've got some photos here in a minute of the existing access road to the station. And I think you'll see the, the reasoning behind, um, the, the, um, the changes to the access road that we're proposing here. Um, we did work with VDA and the county to, uh, address those safety concerns that Appalachian Power has with, um, VDA and their concerns with site distance and those items as well. So moving now to the expansion plan that you can see in the aerial imagery here, the, the existing substation um, in, in the, the gravelled area on, on the property. Um, multiple options were considered, uh, when this project was, um, kicked off of, of different ways that, um, the electrical need could be addressed. Um, and so Appalachian Power has worked, uh, or talked with multiple landowners in the area and looked at multiple different, um, options. And this is what has been, um, you know, determined to as, as a feasible solution. The entire substation expansion will be completed on the existing parcel, um, that, that houses the substation. Um, there is an adjacent parcel, as Mr. Clark mentioned, to the north, um, that is needed, um, to, uh, a- address the, the access road can, um, modification as well as stormwater from the site. Um, there are two expansion areas. They are shown in red on, on the graphic. Um, so those are the portions, um, that, that will actually be, um, included in the, the substation fence after the expansion is completed. So on the east side, uh, fronting James River Road, um, there's about a forty-five by fifty-five foot roughly expansion there that, um, largely is taking up part of the existing driveway to the substation. Um, and then on the west hand side, um, away from the road, there's about a forty by a hundred and eighty foot expansion area um, on, on the west side there. Uh, within the expanded substation fence, there'll be new, three new transformers, new distribution bay, um, and, and then the control building, which is, is the pink rectangle, uh, there at, at, on the east side of the station. The access road, uh, the kind of that, that second part, uh, of the, the application is this, uh, road shown in yellow. So currently, the access road, um, comes into James River Road at, uh, an angle and in this intersection with Bryant Lane. Um, so to, you know, that, that definitely poses a safety concern, uh, for as you're exiting the substation primarily. Um, really an inability to see to the south here. So, um, traffic will enter, um, the, the substation access road, uh, is being shifted about three hundred and fifty feet north. Um, and using this parcel, we'll be able to, you know, have a ninety degree approach to James River Road um, and then have a ninety degree crossing of Bryant Lane, um, to then enter the, the substation parcel. The blue shaded area is the stormwater pond and then, um, the blue lines are, are largely the stormwater drains um, and, and ditches to manage water from the site. The dark green areas largely a- a long James River Road, those are vegetation areas that will not be touched. They will be protected during construction to remain. Um, that, that provides a lot of the buffer between the road and the substation currently. And those will remain. In addition, all of the bright green, um, those are, um, vegetations that, that's proposed. And we've worked with, with county staff to provide as much screening as possible, um, in, in this tight parcel. I guess to the question, um, a- about, um, the portion of the, the southern portion of the parcel. Um, I, I'll, I'll show a photo here. This is a, it is a steep drop. It's about a ten foot, uh, elevation difference between the road um, and the substation pad. Um, additionally, there is a, a grounding grid that sur- uh, surrounds the substation. It extends outside of the substation fence, three to, I think it's about three feet. Um, and then there needs to be a buffer so that animals don't gather right around the substation fence. That obviously is a reliability concern, um, if animals enter the substation. So that is the, um, the reasoning, um, that there is some, some lower vegetation there currently um, that, that should remain untouched and, and that will, uh, provide as much buffer as possible. I'll go to the, the grading plan. I, I think you've seen this already. You can kind of see it, the contours here, um, showing that, that elevation difference. Um, I think there was also a question about plantings around the stormwater pond. Um, and detailed, you know, this is not a, a detailed design necessarily. There are still some, uh, items that need to be worked out in the civil engineering for this pond. The, the item that also has to come into consideration here is you can see the right of way, um, that crosses over that pond. So that is an, an electric line right there. Um, so planting within that right of way is, is another, um, consideration that, that needs to be part of that, um, detailed design. So let me go to the pictures here. This is the existing substation, um, looking from the, the current access road. Um, so, um, as you're approaching the substation up the road, that, that is, um, the existing station. So there will be a small expansion, um, just to the, the left of the image here. And then, uh, the, the majority of the expansion area is, is on the backside of the parcel. This is the existing access road. So, uh, in the foreground, this is Bryant Lane off to our right. And the, the road coming in, in an angle, that is the, the existing access to the substation. Um, so, so that's the, the safety concern and that, that's what we want to address. Um, following construction, that access road will be replanted as part of the vegetation plan that we worked on. Um, was to, to fill that area in, um, after construction is completed. Just past the, uh, substation entrance. So this is currently the, the view of the substation from uh, James River Road as we're looking, you know, right towards the substation. Um, you can. You can see some of the steel behind the vegetation, but it is fairly well covered as you're looking south. As you look north, along James River Road, you can see the the elevation grade there, and that is the the challenge to providing any screening along this hillside. You know, in addition to the transmission line above, there, you know, we were having trouble finding a solution that we could plant here that, you know, really provided screening in this area. And then lastly, this picture is from Bryant Lane, so the substation is over to the the right and James River Road is directly at the end of of the gravel road here. Again, with with transmission lines coming in, that's where there is an opening. But this is the the view from from Bryant Lane and what the residences would have at the back of the property. Lastly, a schedule of where we've been and and where we're going. We did start this process back in twenty eighteen, met with the community in spring
Thank you.
of this year, and construction is expected to begin in twenty four.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any questions for the applicant at this time?
Yeah, I just had one, I don't know if it's a question, I guess it's a question. I'm hung up on that little stretcher road, and I just don't understand why a low evergreen shrub single bay of evergreen shrubs couldn't be added at the top of that hillside between the limits of disturbance and to the left there, yeah.
Yeah, our situation up there, again, what he was talking about also was that we've got a ground grid.
Can you say your name and come closer?
Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry, I'm Scott Markwell, I'm the project manager on this project. And right outside the station, we've got to take the grounding grid outside the station three feet.
So the grounding grid is actually a metal grid?
Yes, there's metal under the ground, so that eliminates that first three feet. And then we also need a maintenance buffer there then, too. And basically, that's taken us near the top of that slope.
I see.
If we go to put anything on that slope, then we risk destabilizing that slope then, too. So that's that's got us kind of caught here and and trying to say, hey, you know, really what we've got there today, you know, we've still got some growth up that slope that's natural there anyway. And if we go to disturb that, we may disrupt that slope again, and then we've still got the we've got the ground grid to deal with, and then a a work buffer, a maintenance buffer outside of that, and then we can't, you know, we can't close in any closer there, and we're essentially at the top of that slope there.
Yeah, I understand. So the maintenance buffer that you're talking about is like, oh, an walkable access? It's allow you to get access.
It would be a walkable area where you could go out there, there was, you know, somebody may go out there and cut a hole in the fence, for example, and try to steal some copper, so you never know why you're gonna have to be out there as far as dealing with lands.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions for the applicant? All right, thank you, gentlemen. We'll see if there are anyone from the public who would like to comment on this. Is there anyone, are there any publics in the audience? All right, I don't see anyone coming forward, is there someone online who would wish to speak?
No, ma'am, there isn't.
Okay, there's no one from the public, you have a chance to come back and make any other concluding remarks you like. You don't have to. Less is more, okay. Yeah, I I'll just note, I mean, it was kind of, that picture you're looking at right now on the screen is my daily commute.
Oh, really?
Yes, every, that's my my terrible commute going from Howardsville, Scottsville every day. So I drive by the substation every day, and I I can say that the way that the driveway is now, where it kind of comes out this weird angle, you also saw this very steep, and there's some erosion rails there, it's quite unsafe. And I know during the ice storm, we had some trees down across the driveway, had to get right out there. So it's it's actually just a messy area that should be closed off, the new, the access that they're proposing is much safer, I mean, you also might have noticed that the the current diagonal kind of comes out the entrance to another farm. You know, so there's potential for conflict, whereas their new entrance doesn't like come right into a driveway that tractors are coming out of. So anyway, I I think it's well done, the the slope also that you were just talking about is quite steep, too, and one of the problems we have on that road is you know, just volunteer trees that come in on a slope that's almost vertical, and then they invariably fall in the road, closing the road, making it less safe for power. I was, I I didn't remember to ask this to the applicant, but maybe you could just nod at me, is this going to also affect Scottsville's power in terms of reliability? Awesome, I'm tired of buying surge protectors. Yes, it's just a personal, personal interest in running a technology firm that relies on we will, you will help all of the downtown business districts. So with that, any other comments or questions or concerns about this? Is someone prepared to make a motion, perhaps, the commissioner from such such district?
I would be pleased to make that motion. Are you gonna put the sample motion up, or I can figure it out, probably? Okay, great. I move to recommend approval of SP twenty twenty-two zero 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 four Scottsville Substation Expansion Project with the condition recommended in the staff report.
Second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, Carolyn, could you call the roll, please?
Yes, ma'am, Mr. Murray?
Hi.
Mr. Bivins?
Hi.
Mr. Carazana?
Hi.
Ms. Firehawk?
Hi.
Mr. Missile?
Hi.
Thank you.
All right, here's to more reliable and attractive power. All right, so with that, we'll move on to another substation expansion project. I'll have a changing of the guard here, and we will now hear about SP two zero two two zero 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 twenty-one Dominion Hollymead Substation Expansion Project, and I see staff is just getting in place. All right, we're ready for the staff report, madam.
Yes, we are continuing with the theme, Rebecca Ragstow, Planning Manager, and I'll be presenting this item. This is the Hollymead Substation Expansion, different end of the county. So this is the location map. It is located off of Worth Crossing, near the Forest Lakes commercial area to the north northwest, and then surrounding the rest of the property are either residential areas of Forest Lakes or north, excuse me, Forest Lakes North Clubhouse, and then the lake and trail amenity. It's about a six point seven two acre parcel, it has split zoning, but utilities are allowed in any zoning district, and it is designated urban density residential, but we would expect utilities in any of our zoning districts. So I mentioned the nearby properties, this is just an aerial view of the existing conditions that shows you the proximity of one of the newer sections of Forest Lakes to the north and the east. And then the lake and the trail amenity that goes around the lake. There are significant wooded areas on the property right now that provide screening to the Forest Lakes area and then residents, but there are, there is this area here that I'm pointing to that is it is visible now, there are visible impacts now, it's an existing condition.
Just little shrubbies.
Maybe getting, all right. So what the proposal is, is to expand towards that lake and amenity area. You'll see the existing facility is hatched and the existing entrance is off of Worth Crossing. And then there would be stormwater management and a retaining wall that is necessary. There is an, it's, I mentioned it's about a six point seven two acre site. The existing area is about one point four six acres as far as the facility area. With the expansion of about a number, excuse me, with the expansion of about another one point six six acres, it'll be about two point two eight acres, and the expansion will add some additional equipment that the that the technical team will tell you about, but it will improve the, it's necessary for the existing system. It won't be expanding capacity, but will help the the system run more efficiently. And after the special use permit process, there would be a site development plan that would include the final details about landscaping and stormwater management, although I will say with stormwater management, our county engineers indicated that Virginia Dominion Power is their own program authority, so they won't be coming through the county for that review. But that would be the next steps if this is approved, so those things would be covered during that process. We've we've looked at this as far as detriment to abutting properties, primarily, our concerns are with with, as you talked about with the last one, the visibility and screening, and then also what to expect as far as any any sound impacts. At the time we wrote the report, we didn't have as much information, the applicant has provided us some additional information on what the existing facility sounds like, and the expansion as well will have to meet the ordinance standards, decimal levels that we're comfortable with. There was a community meeting, and the folks that attended said that there haven't been any noise impacts from the existing facility. They had some questions about what it would look like, the applicant has some photo simulations they're gonna go over, that was shared at the community meeting. So screening and noise were the primary discussion points at the community meeting, but also there are some nearby neighbors that need some additional information about the electronic, excuse me, the electric magnetic fields, because for personal reasons, as far as pacemaker, which didn't realize that was
Sorry, I missed the last part.
A pacemaker.
Oh, pacemakers.
Yes, so they're working directly with Dominion Power about that and have been since they moved there. That's just sort of a little something we learned along the way in reviewing these. And there are some specific regulations in the ordinance with regard to section five, which we went over in the staff report that we believe will be met, and so we didn't have any concerns. Like I said, the final details on both the screening and the noise will be taken care of prior to site plan approval or prior to installation of the new equipment. And the proposed upgrade, as I mentioned, would improve electric transmission without creating any any new impacts. We think it won't be worse than any visual impacts that are already there. And we mentioned that we didn't have as much sound information, and we'd like as the time of the report, but we we have that now, so are comfortable with that, so we've recommended approval. And there are some, we have the motion slide and condition slide. The conditions of approval are related to the sound study and also establishing the 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 major elements, the location of where the improvements will be and where existing trees will remain. With that, I will see if you have any questions.
Okay, questions for staff? Commissioners?
So so there's some concerns expressed by the public about whether herbicides would be used to maintain the right of way. What was the answer to that?
They'll they'll have to answer that, I mean, they were gonna look into that with a different division at the time of the community meeting. It's not something that we regulate locally.
It's just it is close to a water, I mean, body, so that I understand, maybe that's something that we look at. And and then the other thing, it looked on the map, is it gonna encroach on to the hundred foot buffer on the lake?
There isn't extreme buffer required around the lake. Is not.
Isn't it a stormwater pond?
It's correct, it's one of many retention ponds.
Right, so it's itself a stormwater facility, that's why it's not a buffer.
Oh, okay.
It's not a water of the United States, okay.
What's not a water of the United States?
Yes.
Well, I'm gonna use that at some point.
Okay, well, you enjoy yourself over there, Mr. Bivins. All right, so with that, is there any other questions for staff?
Said one, one question, maybe I'm missing something, but the, what is the total area of that currently occupies the acreage? The existing facility?
They've indicated one point four six acres is is part of the area that's disturbed, and then the additional one point six, but there's they also provided the square footage.
Got it, I just, I think there's, and the details of the proposal and the staff report, it's mirroring, unless I'm missing something, it's mirroring the previous Scottsville Substation and has one point two acres and five point two acres?
All right.
I don't know if that matters, just as a heads up. It's this, I didn't think they could be exactly the same, and it ended up being exactly.
Highly unlike. Oh, cut and paste.
Awesome.
Okay, anything else? Thank you for that correction, I'm sure she wouldn't want us to go to the board like
Do we have any, sorry.
Yes, go.
Do we have any details on the, I think you mentioned a retaining wall that was gonna be required for the expansion? There any details on that at all, the height of that wall or? The expansion of that wall, is that all, is that the it's so that 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 entire red line is?
No, it's not the entire red line, actually, it's just in that one corner where it's necessary when I'm where I'm pointing, and I think they can correct me if I'm wrong, but it it won't be very tall, I mean, six or ten feet.
Anything else?
Yeah, and the other is the level spreader.
And there's no proposed additional vegetation in that area beyond that retaining wall?
There's a lot of existing vegetation in that area of the site. So during the site plan process, we'll be making sure that existing vegetation is still adequate, and we'll look at the tree health, and they'll supplement where necessary, based on the ordinance standards with either all the landscaping they can where they can, like you heard from before, in some areas, there there might be fencing that won't be needed to screen some of the equipment because of the the power line grid situation.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, if there's no other questions for staff at this time, we're ready to hear from the applicant. There, Parks is presenting, Jenna Brown. But they're all coming.
Good evening, thank you for having us. I'm Joe Leachman, this is Craig Murphy, we're with GAI Consultants, and we're supporting Dominion, we're civil engineers working on the project, and we have several folks from the Dominion team here as well that can also help answer your questions. To the as was discussed already, we're gonna be adding equipment to the subs, to the existing substation to improve its reliability. These are essentially large copper coils that will regulate the current and help to produce more reliable power as well as, you know, help the existing equipment last longer. We're expanding on a property that Dominion currently owns. They had originally developed a substation there, and it's done one expansion previously. Okay, Craig, you want to talk about the site?
I'll take talking this slide, so what you're seeing on your screen now is so we've been able to clean up the design from the original information that was submitted. So what you see on your screen is, you know, zoomed in area of the, you know, light gray is the existing pad area, and then the dark gray is the proposed pad area, like mentioned before, in the existing parcel is six point seven two acres. So based on updated survey information, we have so the existing gravel pad area and the access coming into the pad is one point five nine acres of existing gravelled area. The proposed expansion area, the gravel area is another zero point seven seven acres, making the total pad area two point three five acres of gravel area you see on the plan. The design and the grading has all been done to make sure that it's stable, it's maintainable, all the field slopes along the outer edges of the pad are three to one, so they're mobile. You know, the extension, there's an existing retaining wall on the south side of the existing pad. So what the expansion does is the posed retaining wall comes along that southern boundary and extends that retaining wall there to prevent encroachment on the neighboring parcel while maintaining a ten foot setback off that parcel with the wall. So based on this, our design, you know, the project, you know, it results in, you know, no changes in access, so it'll utilize the existing access. There's no Um, there's no increases in traffic to and from the site based on normal operation. Um, there's no new utility needs, uh, so no new water or sewer demands based on based on the expansion. Um, there's no floodplain impacts and then there's no impacts to wildlife. Um, there was bad study completed and there's no impact to any endangered species um, as part of this expansion. So next, next slide. Um, so we've zoomed in on on this southern area, you know, it shows the existing storm um, stormwater detention system. So with the existing pad. There's currently a a subsurface detention system there with a storm drain. So what we're proposing to do is. Uh, modify this system and extend it along this southern um, side of the pad to uh, capture runoff. And it'll be discharged through the existing outfall that's there now and along the existing drain adjustment. So there's no increase in flow. It'll it's it's at existing or probably below existing conditions now, so we're actually improving. Stormwater runoff from that point. Um, so runoff to the east will be captured by.
Okay.
Level spreaders and spread out at or below existing levels now, so there will be no impacts to the neighbor or the pond. Part of that plan. Um, so next slide, so this here is similar to the the slide that was in the package submitted. So what we've tried to do here is highlight um. Tree canopy coverage of the site. So the existing parcel as a whole, there was three point four four acres of existing tree canopy coverage on this parcel. The proposed tree canopy coverage after expansion is two point nine two acres, so we're removing roughly a half acre of trees. On the site, which is highlighted in the yellow you see on on this slide, so. We're trying, we've tried to maintain um, a buffer between the property line and the expansion. Um, the area near the retaining wall, we get within that um, setback that we'd have to clear to the property line. Um, but we plan to work with the county to supplement that with plannings to add the screen um, along that area.
I guess, real quick before we get off of that slide to answer a couple of questions that you all had previously. There's there are existing trees just off of Dominion's property as well, and you know, the depth of those. To our project is a minimum, I believe, of about twenty feet, and I think somebody asked the question on the height of the retaining wall. Uh, and Craig, I didn't miss if you said that or not, but it's about seven feet max on the proposed, which is similar to the existing retaining wall that's along the southern. Limit of the project. Right, uh, as was mentioned by Rebecca, there were some simulations done. And well, the those show some of the areas where the views were taken from. This is the first, the top picture shows the conditions, the the bottom picture shows what those proposed uh. Reactors would look like. Uh, there's a there's an additional uh, structure within the fencing. Uh, you can see the fencing is a little closer in the view there under the proposed. Simulation two, uh, again, that's showing it from a a different view from across the lake. And really, you don't see much difference between existing and proposed. It's uh, the, you know, the trees pretty much block the view from that side. That's if you were able to see through the trees, that's that's what the substation would look like. The gray is the existing with the green being the expansion. And as we talked about somewhat already, uh, we're working to minimize environmental impacts. We'll comply with state standards on the erosion control and the stormwater. Uh, and you and it was mentioned that that gets run through a Dominion like a third party reviewer. Sound studies, you know, there've been, there's an existing sound study done. Uh, another study will be done after the the system's online. But you know, right now, all sound levels are within the ordinance uh, limits, and that's what's anticipated for the proposed project as well. Craig mentioned uh, wildlife and the bat survey that we have done uh, that indicated no impacts there. Landscaping, uh, we. We've worked and Dominion has to develop some concepts for landscaping and will continue to do that with input from the county as we move through the site approval process. Timeline, uh, project was approved by uh, PJM in early twenty two. Uh, we began the process uh, with the county here in the summer of twenty two. Continue through these uh, public meetings this fall and winter. With the anticipation of getting permits and approvals and beginning construction in the spring of twenty three. Wrap up with uh, construction completion uh, fall of twenty three. Yeah, I'm sure I skipped something along the way, but I didn't want that yellow and red light to come on either.
Well, you did well. You didn't even get to yellow. All right. So with that, do we have questions for the applicant, Mr. Murray?
Yes, do you know if it would be if you're going to be maintaining the right of ways with um, with mowing or spraying?
Should I defer to uh, James from our environmental thing?
Yeah, so I'm James Young with the Dominion Biomeal. Um, so typically within the existing utility corridors, there'd be generally mowing. But if we were to do spraying, um, it's generally EPA approved uh, spot spraying versus broadcast spraying. Um, and typically we would also rotate um, the the levels of spraying to try to reduce uh. The the likelihood of the species that we're targeting to um, not be as reactive to it. And then um, we also have agreed to within and around adjacent aquatic resources to use um, specific sprays. In regards to some comments through the SEC associated with DEQ. Um, so so we do spray, but typically we'd mow first and and spraying would be reduced to the minimum. Does that help?
Okay, it does. Thanks.
Hey, other questions for the applicant? Your Bivens?
Could you just give us some some sense of what what noise um, is generated by a um. By our, a, an electric transmission air core series reactor?
Paul will handle that one.
Okay.
Good evening, Tom Proms. So we had the manufacturers of the aircore reactors go ahead and give us some plots for sound generation? Oh, the sound will vary with the amount of current passing through the device. So we uh, got sound generation values associated with um. Average loading on the device, day to day current uh, peak, so the maximum amount of current we project to the device to see in the next five years. And then max permissible, as in the device's maximum continuous current capability. Uh, so the plot you see above is associated with the the average current. So uh, at the green line indicates ten dB. At that distance from this, the series aircore reactors and twenty dB, um, which. At the, uh, you know, at that distance, you would have, at the distance from the substation where the residences are and people would be, it's effectively silent. Uh, the next would be the the peak seasonal value we'd see was in the five year projected, this uh, five year projected calendar. And we see uh, the green line indicates thirty five dB. Uh, and just to give you a sense, um, you know, ambient noise is in the forties to fifties typically. Um, so again, this would be less than ambient experience. And then this represents the maximum current the device could actually see before it would have to be forced out off of, out of service to protect it. And we see it would be fifty dB still within the property boundary.
Okay. I was just opening the aerial to look at it again to see who was to the west. That's more residences, but there's, okay.
Yep.
And uh, it should be noted that the study done initially when we were looking at these uh, found that, and I'll just quote them. They said the noise associated with the substation will be below ambient noises for most of the sites analyzed. And the noise modeling has indicated levels at the residences located to the north of the expansion, so bottom of the screen is projected. Are within one decibel of ambient values measured.
Okay, that's very helpful. Thank you.
No problem.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, do we have anyone from the public who is just to speak on this matter? I don't think there is any public here. Is there anyone online?
No, ma'am, there sure isn't.
Thank you. All right, with that, we'll end the public hearing portion, take it back, permission for discussion? Any discussion or points anyone wants to make? All right, hearing none, pretty straightforward application, good materials, well organized. So with that, uh, is there someone who wants to make a motion, the commissioner whose uh, district this is, is not here this evening? All right, Mr. Carazana.
A move to recommend approval of SP two zero two two zero 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 twenty one Hollymead Substation Expansion with conditions as recommended in the staff report.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All right, let's call the roll, please.
Mr. Missile?
Hi.
Ms. Firehawk?
Hi.
Mr. Carazana?
Hi.
Mr. Bivens?
Hi.
Mr. Murray?
Hi.
Thank you.
Forgot if I, okay, okay, remember, I'm delirious now. All right. Congratulations, you're on your way to the Board of Supervisors, woo! All right, good luck with that. All right, have a good evening. We'll give you a second to clear the chamber unless you want to hear exciting committee reports. Nope, okay. All right, commissioners have any committee reports this evening? We'll go left to right, Luis, then. Mr. Missile?
Uh, I do, I don't have my notes fully together, but.
You can pass and come back to you.
No, I can, I can handle it. Pantops Community Advisory Committee meeting last night. Um, there's redistricting, so now part of that is in the Scottsville District.
Okay.
Um, and a um, sixty unit development was presented to the group that's located right behind the giant. On Pantops. Uh, it's adjacent to a stormwater pond that was designated by the comprehensive plan as open space and park. And um, the proposal is for, as I said, sixty units.
Is it, are these townhouses, apartments? What are they?
Uh, it it's, there was very little detail.
Okay, just units.
It was essentially a strip of units and a strip of parking. There was quite a, quite a bit of comment from the public. Um, there was a misunderstanding that uh, there was a belief that the the previous owners, uh, Dr. Hurt had. Promised that or committed to maintain this as public um, parkland, but. That was clarified that that was something that was in the. Community uh, in the comprehensive plan and not something that the applicant had put forward. Um, there was concern about access, concern about traffic, concern about the fact that they were taking away habitat um, from deer and eagles. Uh, and so, yep, so um, again, it's just very beginnings of the process, but it's my only report.
That clears up my clarification as to what can, where you're going last night.
Yes, that's right.
You're off to a big community meeting. I was like, what? I don't understand. Where where's he going? Okay, anyone else?
So um. Uh, my CAC met. And we actually went on a uh, on a bus tour. Yes, so that we could show, we have, we have, we have a number of individuals who have just joined the CAC. And um, we've also had a reconfiguration of the CAC. And so we took the time, the supervisor McKeel took the time, um, and John brought us a a lovely bus. And we went around and showed people sort of the basic outline of our CAC and showed sort of talked about some of the projects which were going on. Which were coming forward in the CAC. And uh, we were joined by Kevin McDermott. That's right, yeah, yeah. And uh, he uh, did a a very nice job sort of identifying, talking to people about various traffic. Uh, improvements like the um, the the roundabout that's hopefully at, or that's perhaps coming at. At District Avenue by Stonefield and the pedestrian bridge going over from Stonefield over into the city. And then a number of improvements, sidewalk improvements that may be coming to our district, to district. So that was, I think people appreciated it because they got. Out of a, out of the the um, Greer Greer School and got to see some of the district, which most of them had not. It's a very interesting thing how much people don't.
They just stay in their neighborhood.
Don't know where they live, that just is just continues to.
That's great, though, that you did that. That's fantastic. Yeah, all right. All right, no other, okay.
Yes, um, so we had a follow up on a previous question about the Montclair Stream. A consultant had been hired to make a stream determination. And the determination has come back. It is indeed a stream. Um, it's declares an intermittent stream, and so the hundred foot buffer. And water protection ordinance will apply to that stream.
And for people who might be listening and might not know what you're talking about, just for the record, this was for a proposal up in the Croze area.
Correct, this is a proposal.
That we didn't actually have the hearing about because there was some uh, conflict or controversy or misunderstanding about the status of the stream, which had to be investigated.
Correct, and one of the, one of the issues in here was that originally the stream, stream and its buffer were shown in the Croze master plan. And then um, were removed. Um, and so there's a lot of concern from the public that there was no public engagement about why or how that determination was. Determination was made. And um, and so in a lot of public interest in putting those, that stream and those buffers back on the map. And I believe that's now been done, correct?
Uh, not not that I am aware of officially now.
It, so so it either has been done or will be done. That's my understanding. And and let me just caution that this matter is still technically pending before the planning commission, so we probably ought to save. More extended discussion about the proposal for when that comes back to the commission.
Okay, thank you.
No.
And um, just to answer your email question to me, no, I did not receive that information um, until you sent it to me.
Oh.
I appreciate you sending it to me because I did not get it before that.
About the stream?
Yeah.
Okay.
You said, I assume you've received this report, blah, blah, blah.
Oh, okay.
Verbally tell you, no, no one sent it to me, which is unfortunate.
Then I will, then I will forward you all the information I have to the entire commission.
Okay. We will not have a public meeting.
Or if you don't want to get it, I'll just send it to Karen.
Yes, I would prefer not to receive that information, and since I think you may have an inside trap on this, and that's good. But I would prefer for it to be filtered to me from staff.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Okay, so with that, um, the next item, I don't have a report because I I will report that for the fourth consecutive month, the Stark Preservation. Committee has not met quorum. And I also personally lament that because I came to the county office building for that meeting and then. Enjoyed lounging about, reading emails for two hours, waiting for my turn. To you talk about zoning, so. I'm just saying that um, they had, each time the staff thought they had quorum, that it's it's a real problem. So I don't know what's going on with that. I'll leave it at that. The next item that we have tonight is Board of Supervisors Meeting Review from October five and nineteen by Mr. Rapp.
Thank you. Uh, on the fifth, the board did approve uh, the Scruby cell tower that came before this commission as well. Then on the nineteenth, the uh, the board did endorse the uh, framework for the phase one of the comprehensive plan that uh, also came before the commission. So we will be moving forward with uh, beginning to talk about phase two over the next couple of months. Um, dive into that as soon as we can.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Rapp. The next item we have is the Draft Planning Commission Rules of Procedure. Which we've been stringing along, waiting to get quorums so that we could actually adopt them. So is there any um, presentation we need to have, or I don't think so.
Not really, ma'am. I I'm I'm happy to um, just make some brief remarks to deduce this. So 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 again, Madam Chair Andy Herrick with the County Attorney's Office, and I had been drafting, as the commission knows, some revised rules of procedure. That update the remote participation policy to track recent changes to state law. Those are reflected in new provisions in Rule Seven of the Rules of Procedure. Um, again, there's not much substantively that's changed other than just tracking uh, changes to state law. Um, to address some of the quorum situations that we've had recently, it still does require, as state law requires. That a quorum be physically assembled, so we still must have at least four commissioners physically present in order to have a meeting. And as I mentioned previously, state law does not allow planning commissions to meet all virtually. Uh, individual members can can uh, participate remotely, uh, but again, the the rules that you have before.
But again, the, the rules that you have before you are the maximum of what state law currently allows. So I'm happy to answer any questions you may have about it.
Okay, I think we asked them the last time we had this. Any questions about the procedure? So I do believe, so we do, we need to, we need to make a motion to.
A motion to adopt the amended rules of procedure if that's the will of the commission.
All right.
I, I will move to adopt the amended rules of procedure.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, it's been motioned and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Can we have the roll call?
Yes. Mr. Murray?
Hi.
Ms. Firehawk?
Hi.
Mr. Bivens?
Hi.
Mr. Missile?
Hi.
Mr. Carazana, sorry. Think I'm getting tired.
Hi.
Don't feel bad, Carolyn. I couldn't remember what county I was in when I started the meeting, so. Doing better than me. I was like, where am I? Word. Okay. So, thank you very much. That passes. And moving on to any old or new business? That was the new business. Anything old? You want to dredge up?
I need to discuss our upcoming dates, if possible. When we were reviewing our dates, we realized that the first meeting in November falls on election night. And we wanted to, we did have a couple of, I would say, public hearings, which will be highly attended. We wanted to make sure that we didn't have any barriers to attendance on that. So we have coordinated with the applicants on those and would recommend that we reschedule that to November 29th. That will allow us to have enough time to run our advertisements and meet our requirements there. So that would be the first order of business to see if the commission is willing to cancel that November 8th date and set it for November 29th.
Ask a question. Will there be a work session on the 29th?
There will not. We will not be having a, it doesn't look like we'll have a work session in November.
Got it.
So it would potentially just, it would be a long meeting, though, just to be clear. Tonight was a bit stacked, but they were all pretty straightforward applications. Whereas we do have some potential for a very long meeting.
Correct. The 29th would be Old Ivy Residences. Round two. And on the 22nd, we, so we kind of have them staggered nicely to where we have at least one large item each night coming up for the next few meetings.
Staff put the, held our time for the work sessions. So will you have someone in the office take those off? Or, or maybe we're going to meet it.
No, I, I confirmed today with our comp plan consultant. Since we just got through the board, we're not really ready to dive right into Phase 2 work yet. So it'll be nice to have a month to kind of do some planning so we can come y'all more prepared.
Meeting would be on the 29th. We'd not begin until 6:00 PM.
It would be on the 22nd.
22nd. I'm not, I'm no help.
And then we would have one on the 29th. And then while we're talking about that, I would also say.
That's right, 22nd and the 29th, sorry.
While we're doing schedules, I would also recommend that we cancel the December 27th meeting. I know I've heard from two commissioners that we'll be out of town, and that is between holidays. So I say we ditch that one as well.
What is the first meeting in January?
It would be the second Tuesday. Let's see what that day is.
What were you asking? I couldn't hear you.
Have it on our schedule.
When the first meeting in January is?
It looks like the 10th. January 10th. Then we are, we would meet December 13th and then January 10th.
I need to, I'll verify, I'll, I'll, I'll get this to, to the chair, but I'll be out of, I'll be out of the country from the 26th till. Right now is the 9th, which cuts it very close. But.
Okay. So you missed a flight.
That's why.
Not good. Yeah, since we're on the top, I'll, I'll be out of the country as well from the 22nd until New Year's Day. December. So it won't matter because we don't have any meetings, but if you really want to talk about the site plan with me on Christmas Eve or something, I won't be there.
Easy enough to make, potentially make quorums.
Okay.
So procedurally, what we would need is a motion to amend the calendar, since the calendar is something that the commission's previously approved. And what I'm understanding, Mr. Rapp, to suggest is that the calendar be amended to add meeting, a, a meeting on November 29th and to delete the meetings on November 8th and December 27th.
Correct.
What you said.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we'll let Lonnie have a second. All right. Any discussion of the calendar changes? We've already discussed it. All right. Do we have to call the roll? And yeah, okay, Carolyn, can you call the roll for one last hurrah?
Yes, ma'am. Can you tell me who made the motion?
I did.
I thought it was you, but I wasn't sure. Okay, thank you.
About to expire.
Mr. Missile?
Hi.
Mr. Carazana?
Hi.
Mr. Bivens?
Hi.
Ms. Firehawk?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Hi.
Thank you.
All right, awesome. All right, any more old business or items for follow-up? I saw we just follow ourselves right out the door. Okay, so with that, I adjourn this meeting of the Admiral County Planning Commission with the intention to reconvene on November 22nd?
Correct.
Thank goodness. Good night.
Thanks.